...regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, it's been Thursday, August 8th, 2019. Please stand for a moment of silence for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilperson Amy Aller. Our pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the love for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call?
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Trossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Present.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Eight is present, one is absent. Thank you. It is our tradition to have 30 minutes of comment time available to the public to comment on non-agenda items. So during this time, and if you need an agenda, there's some right up here at the front. Attorney Shagley is pointing those out to you right as we speak. And you're welcome to take one. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less in the interest of time. But anyone who would like to make a comment on an item that is not on our agenda can come forward, state their name, their address, and make the comment.
My name is Donald Frank Hyde, reporting from Indianapolis, Indiana. This one's not on this week's, this, today's agenda was on last week's agenda. On the responsibility on the jail, I got news for you. The voters will decide what your responsibility is and is not. And I do not believe that you have no responsibilities now. You now move to another list of responsibilities. You've moved from where we're going to build it, how much it's going to cost or not cost, to now you've got the job of making sure that it is built properly. You've got the job of making sure that nobody rips off the taxpayers of this community for money by overinflating the prices. You've got to make sure that the right crews are building the thing. You don't get this group of people that, oh, they know how to do the job, but they're not, let's say, the best, you know? Apparently, the day in the building things, at least in my lifetime, and especially in the last 30 years, especially in the last 20 years, there was like four or five levels of people that do construction. And these levels go from, we can build it and it will stand, and maybe we can get 20 years out of it. We can build it and it will stand, and my gosh, we might get 30, maybe even 40 years of your repair, right? And then there are the better ones, the A&amp;B contractors, that can build it and will stand for 50, 60 years, and then the best ones, the really best ones that use all the best material and no, they, they, they cut no cost. And those buildings stand for 100 years or plus, and if they're taken care of, well beyond that. And we have an entire city full of those buildings still standing, still usable, still being used to this day. So as a, as a taxpayer and a voter, I'm hoping that when we build public buildings using public funds, that you, the mayor, and the city council, and the county council, and the county commissioner, will take that into consideration, that you need to build it so it will last for 60, 70 years, so that two or three generations can go by without having to pay to build another one. Because we're always going to have to have a jail. We're always going to have to have a courthouse. We're always going to have to have a police station. And by the way, we don't have a real police station these days, and we haven't had one for a while. We need one. As a voter, taxpayer, I want to know why we haven't got one? Oh, but it's on a list. We'll get to it. But you keep hopping things in front of it. Your problems are far from over. Your job really has just begun. Thank you.
Let me clarify. The responsibilities for the jail are with the county. That's the county commissioners and the county council, not this city council. All we took action on last week was a rezoning action for a piece of property where the county could put the jail if they so decided to do that.
Thank you. If anyone else who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
My address? Okay. My name is Kiri Youssef. I live in Farrington Grove neighborhood. I'm resident of that neighborhood, and I'm also treasurer of the Farrington Grove Historical District. If you don't know that neighborhood association, it is a group of people dedicated to the preservation and promotion of Farrington Grove's neighborhood. I'm speaking tonight for the association and its members, and my comments this evening are tied to the property at 621 South Center Street.
Excuse me, excuse me, we will take that up as an agenda item? Oh, I'm sorry. Different address.
Okay.
I apologize.
I'm not totally...
My mistake. I'm sorry.
Okay, it's okay. And this was actually read, the first reading, in a special ordinance last week. It has come to our attention that the owner of this property would like to change the zoning to an R3. As I'm sure you know, R3 is the most liberal of residential zoning categories, and among other things, it allows for the dwelling to be rented. Okay, can I still read it?
Absolutely.
It would go for any R3.
Sooner or later, you will stop interrupting me, I call.
No problem. Okay, so R3 is the most liberal residential zoning, and among other things, it allows for the dwelling to be rented by a fraternity or a sorority. And one of the issues we deal with in our neighborhood is the regular noise, late parties, vandalism, trash, traffic, parking, and most recently, a homicide during homecoming that come from organized groups of students. Given that our neighborhood has a substantial population of non-student residents, an R3 zoning is not a good fit. In addition, such a rezoning could open the door to more neighborhood issues, of which we were already trying to resolve. Worse, it would set a precedent that any rental dwelling in our neighborhood is eligible for R3 zoning, which again, neither fits with the mixed population in our neighborhood nor the work we are doing to maintain a safe, clean, and stable community. A better solution would be to grant a zoning of R2 PD, but that's been withdrawn. From our understanding, that type of zoning would allow the owner to do nearly any remodeling that he or she desires. The zoning would keep a cap on potential impact on the neighborhood and prevent a precedent from giving R3 zoning. And finally, we would argue that an R2 PD is a zoning solution that would benefit both the owner and the neighborhood. To conclude, if it comes, I'll come back, don't worry. The Farrington Grove Historical District Association, and again, I'm speaking for its members and hundreds of non-student residents in its neighborhood, asked that the city council reject the R3 zoning of 621 South Center. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your patience on that. Appreciate it.
I'd like to address some of her...
Name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Wendy Bennett, and I'm the managing, I'm a member of Starclass LLC. And I understand her concerns. I have a lot of property in Farrington Grove, and we work endlessly to keep them up and to try to do a good job. But R2 is not without consequences for the person. You have to put firewalls between your units. It makes it much more expensive, maybe like twice as expensive, to turn a property from what would be one house to two units. Because I tried to do that with a house that was built as a house, and I had to go back and put firewalls between things, and it was extremely expensive, sometimes it's not even worth fixing up the older homes because of the financial consequences. On the other hand, I understand Farrington Grove's concerns, and we work very hard to be compatible with the community. And several of our houses, we bought when they were condemned and nobody wanted them. So there's a place for students in the community also. And being a mixed community, I think that everyone can work together, as a lot of them do, to do neighborhood cleanups and things like that. So there are always two sides of every issue. But I do agree that violence and parties are never acceptable.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, then we'll move forward. Thank you. Any questions to the general?
There are none.
Communications to the mayor? He says no. We do have a report that we're going to plug in under Reports for City Officials. We've invited this evening, or I've invited Dr. Rob Hayward from the Vigo County Schools to talk to us about some issues that are facing our school system. And Dr. Hayward, the floor is yours. I think we're also going to dim some lights in here so we can see a presentation at the appropriate time, so.
First, thank you for providing this opportunity, and thank you for public service. It's a challenging task, and I appreciate people that are willing to step out there and do it, because it's not easy. But thank you for this opportunity to talk about some things that are happening at our schools. We have now been giving this presentation that you're getting ready to see to several members of the community, and I think it's appropriate for us to share it with you here tonight. I don't have a clicker, and so I've gone with the thumbs up method. Advance. I, I like this quote from Frank Lloyd Wright, where he's actually talking about the construction of buildings and design, but I think that also plays true when we think about public education. Our community is our source, and our children are the stream. We need that source for our students to rise. However, I think if you're in public education, you always want to prove Frank Lloyd Wright wrong. Every generation wants, desires for that next generation to succeed beyond their measure. And I think that's true for the community as well. Funding streams, I think you understand ours. We have basically two funding streams, local property taxes and sales tax. Sales tax in 2008 started to fund teachers and staff, whereas our property taxes fund debt service, which you know is our mortgage, bus replacement. We replace a 12th of our bus fleet every year, transportation that pays for drivers, fuel, brakes, mechanical work, and capital projects, that's air conditioning, that's computers, heating, carpeting. But those are our two funding streams, as we share with our community as we give this presentation. You went a little too fast for me there. Really, the purpose of this presentation here tonight is really to speak to two tenets. It's to kind of tell you where we're at in our process and speak to the solution. Quite all right. And I've broken it into chapters. And so chapter one is really about our reserve, our cash balance. And so if you're on page three of your handout, you'll see a chart that demonstrates our cash balance. And in that chart, you'll see that over the last three years, our cash balance has been And our discussion about referendum and our discussion about the reduction of $4 million out of our budget is our answer to that dwindling cash balance. If you'll turn the page, you'll see that absent any effort, we believe that by January of 2021, if we do nothing, our school system will be in the red. We will not allow that to happen. Why are the reasons for our cash balance? I'm at the bottom of page four. State funding, inflation, decreased federal funding, and then a decrease in the number of students. And if you're looking at that slide, that's probably chief among the reasons. On the other side, you'll see some things that we have done locally that have impacted that cash balance. One, we've increased the total number of staff, especially for safety and wellness. We've been subsidizing tax cap loss, which you know quite a bit about, more so than even the school systems, in helping out transportation. We've also been subsidizing our losses in our textbook fund, and the ability to attract and retain talent here has been a concern of ours, the salary and raises that we've been given in order to make sure that we're maintaining quality staff. If you move over to the next page, what that page simply demonstrates is the worth, the dollar amount for each student that walks through our doors. If you'll look back at 2013, you'll see a student that walks through our doors at a value of just under $6,000, $5,822. If you forward ahead to last year, you'll see that that value, that dollar amount had changed slightly to $6,362. If you took, if you look at the average, you'll see that that's less than a 2% increase a year. It's difficult to fund our school system when our funding doesn't keep up with inflation. The slide at the very bottom of that speaks to what the next three years looks like for us, with a projection of what our increase from the state of Indiana will look like in our education fund, again, that which is run through sales tax. I'm happy to report, if you look at that middle box 2020, that the state of Indiana forecasted our enrollment at 14,169. As of today, we're at 14,334 students, so that is a plus for us, and we're very appreciative of that enrollment number where it is. If you'll move on to the next page. Keep going, keep going. Next one, stop right there. This represents federal funding, Title I funding. If you think about children that live in poverty, or you think about children who English is not their first language. We use federal funding based upon our free and reduced lunch count to really assist some schools, not all schools qualify for federal funding. But what this slide represents, if you'll look over a 10-year period, what was just slightly over $5 million we were receiving from the federal government has declined to just over $4 million. That slide below, or the next slide, actually demonstrates a change in philosophy in state funding. Remember, each student is worth just over $6,000 to our school corporation. Part of that $6,000 is in complexity index dollars. So if you have a school corporation that has a lot of poverty, a lot of English language learners, you actually receive complexity index dollars from the state. The philosophical change is the state is moving away from complexity index dollars. So our complexity dollars are shrinking, which is having, again, an impact on some of our, some of our students in high need, high poverty areas. One thing that should note here, and I think it speaks to the work of this council and local government, our free and reduced lunch count really hasn't changed in the last 10 years. It has stayed about 53 to 54% as a district. But the changes in complexity dollars do have an impact. If you'll move to the next slide, what you'll see is what I think is at the heart of our issue of shrinking cash balance. The state of Indiana is at an 80-year low, or excuse me, the nation is at an 80-year low in terms of population growth. Indiana is not growing very fast, and Vigo County is not growing at all. I think we hit our zenith about 1972, if you look at some population estimates. People are having fewer school-aged children, and there is more school choice now for children to, and families to select from. So if you go to that next slide, this really speaks to population. This marks the state's lowest, 2018 marks the state's lowest annual tally since 1987, and continues Indiana's decline in birth rates that began during the Greve Recession. If you move to that next slide, though, what little population growth there is, and you understand this, it's happening in and around Indianapolis, in and around the ring. This next slide, I think it's home for me maybe more than any others. This is a map of the state of Indiana. This was done by the Kelly School of Business. It's a reflection of 2018. If you are in orange counting, that means you are not growing. The darker they're blue, the more the growth. I think as a community, as a school system, we've got to try to work to figure out how do we become light blue, and then how do we become darker shades of blue? If not, it won't be just school referenda that we're talking about, but other tough issues that we'll be facing if we do not figure out how our county and our region can grow like some of the others. Next slide, please. This is a tough slide to look at. How many of you graduated from Terre Haute schools? Anybody graduate from north or south? If you graduated from north or south, how many were in your graduating class? That's a rhetorical question, no need to ask. This year, Terre Haute South graduated 340 students. Compare that to how many students you had in your class, and I'm going to bet that's quite a, quite a bit fewer. So, so we're shrinking, and what this demographic study that was done in 2017 indicates is that we're not done shrinking, that we will continue to shrink until at least 2027. Next slide. Over the past 10 years, however, we've lost about 1,300 students. That's probably the equivalent of $8 million. And so a declining enrollment does impact a school's budget. Next slide, please. Again, one student last year for us had a value of $6,326. 157 students equals $1 million. I think that also helps us as we try to move out of deficit spending to what the end solution would be. So when you think about your enrollment, if you lose 150 students, you would understand that you need to adjust your budget $1 million. I think that's a path forward for us. Next slide, please. This is a very interesting slide. In the state of Indiana, if you, if a student touches public school, you are in the system, so you can be tracked. So we know that we have in this county over 15,000 students who are of school age. Of those, 14,295 choose Vigo County schools. You can then see how many choose virtual school, how many choose another public option. In other words, they're going to one of the local school corporations, another out of county. And then you can see how many choose the Indiana Choice Voucher. For us, that's about 155 students that go to St. Pat's. Many of those students end up in our school system. What really, for us, is the challenge is the 367 that choose virtual school and the nearly 300 students that choose another option. We need to, another public option, we need to figure that out. Now, we have, if you'll move to the next slide, now, this is really interesting. Lot of discussion about virtual school. If you take a look at the third one down and you see Union School Corporation. Two years ago, Vigo County did not have a single student that was attending Union School Corporation, and now we have 56 students that attend there. That is not Union Duggar. That's Union Modoc. I got a dollar if you can tell me where Union Modoc is. South, south of Muncie. It's actually a public school that has launched a virtual component, and within two years, they had 56 students from Vigo County that were a part of their attendance roll. I do not believe that virtual school is the best way to educate children. However, you can see what the market is for virtual students just in this county alone. Failure to address that market need, I believe, would mean declining, continued declining enrollment of our students to virtual school. If you think about it, public school is just mirroring what's happening in higher ed. Can't watch a television show very long without seeing a higher ed commercial for virtual school, digital learning. You can see what the impact of that is, of 367 students. So as a result, if you go to that next slide, we have launched our own virtual program. And I think we've done so in a way that this council would be respectful of the rigor that we are bringing to our virtual school. And we look forward to seeing where that will be. There was an article in the paper that spoke to its success. As we've just started, it's really not, maybe a month, six weeks old. We'll keep moving. We know that if they touch the system, we know that there's 169 families in our community that homeschool. We believe there are many, many more homeschool families in our county than that. What our intent will be under our new strategic plan is trying to figure out how to reach out to homeschool families. How do we share resources? What kind of energy and partnership can we provide for homeschool families? We go to the next slide. So if enrollment is one part of our issue, this is the other part. This is a number of employees that we have. I think everyone understands this. We are the second largest employer in the county, second to Union Hospital. When we think about how do you turn a county from orange to blue, we need to find a way to where our school system and our hospital system are not the two largest employers in the county. And I think we will get there. If you look at this chart, what this represents, in 2009, we had nearly 2,250 employees. That bottomed out in 2013, where we had 2,078 employees. And then we started to add staff. That number, though, does not represent new teachers. Oh, a few. If you go to that next slide, it really represents safety, security, health, wellness. That's what that represents. We are very, very appreciative of the city's efforts in helping us with our student protection program. We've gone from eight to 38 student protection officers, and we appreciate this, the city's help in helping to pay for those security guards. As you can see, we've also doubled the number of nurses, five to 10. We'd love to have more nurses than 10 to serve 14,000 students. We've increased the number of guidance counselors by 40%. We have added behavioral interventionists. We've added 18 behavioral interventionists. How many of you know what a behavioral interventionist does? That's a great question. When I was in school, a behavioral interventionist was a paddle. It's not anymore. Behavioral interventionist, I say this, we have worked with our faith-based community and talked to our faith-based community about the issues that face our children. They say the number one issue facing our children is breakdown of the family. When we talk to our nonprofit, at our nonprofit roundtables, we ask that same question, they respond the exact same way, the breakdown of the family. And so what would be traditional behaviors that you would hope children would be bringing to school? Some are not coming in our doors with those behaviors, and behavioral interventionists help our children learn those behaviors needed to have success in school. We've added deans. Think of those as little mini vice principals that help with behavioral issues. And then we've added 86 educational assistants, teachers aides, most of those in special ed. If you look at the next slide, our total tax cap loss is in the $40 million range. I know yours is much, much greater than that, but I think you understand tax cap loss. When we speak of tax cap loss, if you'll move to the next slide, when you think about what we must fund, we must fund debt service. We have to pay our mortgage. We have stayed true to our bus replacement plan. We replace, replace a 12th of our bus fleet. We feel it's important not to get behind in that bus replacement plan. So that really, when they think about that tax cap loss, it really then affects two categories, transportation and capital projects. For us, it has affected transportation the most, and to where last year, transportation nearly ran $1 million in the red. Next slide. This is really on us, and we can be much better than this. This reflects how we've used our educational fund to offset loss in our textbook rental fees. Indiana is only one of two states that actually charges parents for textbooks. We happen to be one of those. We believe we can capture that loss through addressing a proper billing. Next slide. Cash balance is only part of our story. Cash balance is only part of our story. The next part of the story, you probably, if you read the newspaper or watch the news, you know it's true, not just for us, but just about every school system in the state of Indiana. And it's on staffing, so if you go to that next slide, please. We'll even move past this. This really speaks, I love this, it came from a blog, really speaks about the power of every school person. You know, a bus driver impacts children. Cafeteria worker impacts children. Custodial maintenance impacts children. You never know who's going to make that connection. So all school employees are important. We have just as many businesses are having, we're having a hard time finding qualified employees. Next slide, though, speaks to teachers. This is the graduating class of 2019 from Indiana State University, what was once their largest school, and the university is now their smallest school. If you look at that second column down at the bottom, you'll see that Indiana State University graduated seven, excuse me, yeah, seven secondary math teachers total. We needed five this year alone. So not only do we have a difficult time in finding employees for driving buses, working in our cafeterias, we're having a hard time finding teachers. Next slide. Last year, we went through the school year with 42 long-term subs, teachers that did not have the appropriate licensure in front of our students. We've made some adjustments, and we have improved to where this year, we're starting the school year with 25 long-term subs. We do believe, though, that number will drop as a few of those 25 are taking some exams that will allow them to be qualified teachers. So the teacher shortage is real. In December of 2018, a report came out of Indiana University where they surveyed 220 schools. 91% of those schools said they were affected by the teacher shortage in not just science and math, but across the board. So it's not just our issue, but we have to deal with it. Next slide. This really speaks to, again, I think what every business is finding right now, it's hard to find help. Next slide. This is our starting salary at $35,000, so, and it compares to our local neighbors. So if you are one of those seven math teachers, what school are you going to go to? Well, I'm going to tell you, you're probably not going to go to any on that slide. Go to the next slide, please. You're probably going to go to those dark blue or darker blue counties because their teacher compensation looks different. If you'll go back, I'm sorry, if you'll go back, there is a second column there where you see all those yeses and no's. I wish I would have thought of this when I was in Elkhart because I think it was a great strategy when it was implemented. Now, when you're in the midst of a teacher shortage, it's now hurting us. When a teacher graduates or graduates, when a teacher would leave from Indianapolis to come to Terre Haute, their years of experience does not follow them. So if you had 10 years of experience, you start at year zero. Again, 10 years ago, no teacher shortage, that would be a great way to increase your cash balance. However, in the midst of a teacher shortage, I don't believe we can continue with this practice. I'm sorry, if you move forward two slides. Technology, I won't speak a lot about. Technology, just to say that we're working on it. For a district our size, you can expect annual technology cost of about $2 million a year. What we're trying to do is get caught up in the area of technology. We do not have a learning management system. If you think about Indiana State University, Ivy Tech, Rose Home and St. Mary's, all of their digital content hangs on a learning management system. All surrounding counties, their schools have learning management systems for their digital content to hang on. We are working on bringing that here, hopefully within the next year. But we're working on technology, but it does have a substantial cost. Next slide. This one, probably, when looking to move here, I knew that this community had been talking about a building project since 1922. That was a joke. The, I think they, yeah, not a funny one, I guess. The issue, as Amy and I, Amy is my wife, when we looked here, the question really wasn't, should we do something? I think the community already said, we have to do something. The question was, what is that something that we have to do? And in moving here, I thought that would be the referendum that I was going to be leading is helping the community identify what that something would be. I believe we have to address our buildings, but it is bigger than just the high schools. We have 28 buildings that house students, and we have to think about how we utilize all 28 of those buildings as we think about the declining enrollment. So if you go to that next slide. So we believe that in May of 2021, and I don't believe there's anything else on the ballot that year, that we will bring a building project for our community to consider. To get to that point, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of community meetings, and we would love to partner with the council as we think about what those projects look like moving forward. Because I think collaboration is the only way that our projects will be successful. We'll look at the next slide. No need to, I'm coming back to tax caps, you can tell that that's an issue. If you go to the next slide, there's our tax rate. If you'll see, we are right around that, average are right around that 75, 76 range. I think you understand this, that if you decrease someone's taxes, they never remember that. If you increase someone's taxes, they never forget that. But let it be noted, between 2018 and 2019, our tax rate did slide, but it slid because our assessed valuation grew. And we need to continue to figure out how we can help our assessed valuation grow. If we go to the next slide, you can see what our tax rate, and again, I'm talking about school tax rate only, looks like compared to our neighbors. As you think about tax cap loss, those communities in the black, even though they have higher tax rates, are not as affected by tax caps as we are. Anytime you have a school system that's in a urban area, that school system, just like the city, just like the county, we're going to be affected greatly by tax caps. But just to show where we're at in relationship to our neighbors. Next slide, please. There you can see some of those communities that were in the red, excuse me, in the blue, what their school tax rates are. Not their overall tax rate, but where their school tax rate are and where their AV is at. If you could move to that next slide. So a capital referendum, a building project referendum. If you'll look at this slide, it has to be approved by the voters. It's funded by property tax only. It stays in place for 20 years, actually 19 years, eight months. And it's outside the tax caps. That next slide then demonstrates that it affects everyone. No one is immune to a referendum. Everyone has to pay. If you think about renters, they will pay as landlords will increase the cost of renting their home. If you're on fixed income, farmland, I wish there was another way. Just like sometimes I think when you're dealing with tough issues, that you wish there was another way, but to fund a capital referendum, it's through property taxes. Next slide. Next slide demonstrates, this is capital I, capital F. We do not have an understanding of what our building project would be, but if it was a $200 million capital campaign, you could see what the tax impact would be. If you know that our tax rate is 75 cents, you would see 200 million, and it's half of what our current tax rate would be. The next slide demonstrates what $100 million would look like. Again, thinking of these things together as opposed to doing it in isolation, we would love to partner to talk as we think about moving forward with our buildings, with the city and with the county. Go to the next slide. Solutions. Well, I can tell you, if you go to the next slide, there are really no easy solutions to our situation. We are trying to do some things. We are updating our policy book. We have created a bond steering committee to review our bond projects. We, and you know Baker Tilly, as formerly Umbal, who is helping us do a complete financial review. We've brought in Crow Chiswick to help us do an internal controls audit. We have started a finance committee that meets every two weeks that examines our claims. And we've just selected a firm to conduct a transportation audit. We believe that there's some savings that we can find in transportation by looking at route efficiencies and bell schedules and start times. Next slide, please. Next slide. So the solution that we have landed on is the need to trim $4 million from our budget. We will notice trimming $4 million from our budget. If we lose, we will need to trim $8 million from our budget. And there is a big difference between knowing $4 million and feeling $8 million. That's why we're hoping and reaching out to our community to help us bridge where we're at now to where we hope to be by the end of our building project. And that bridge is a $7 million referendum. We'll go onto the next slide. An operational referendum, similar to a capital project referendum. Same things apply, except it's for eight years, not 20 years. Next slide. Same people support it, everyone. Next slide. To raise $1 million for the school system, it's just over two cents to the tax rate. If you move to the next slide. So that is what a $7 million operating referendum looks like to our taxpayers. You can see $100,000 home, a $200,000 home. You can see what it costs for one acre of farmland, and we know there are no one-acre farms. And you can see what the cost is to commercial property. So there is a cost to this operational referendum. It's 16 cents. It would be in place for eight years. And again, it is not the solution, but I believe it is a bridge. Next slide. So community support, help us with $7 million for safety, health, wellness, teacher compensation and transportation. We have to figure out how to end a structural deficit of $4 million as an organization. Next slide. So after Sandy Hook, you've seen that. So what we're asking the community to do, next slide, is through that $7 million, help us set aside $1.4 million for our student protection officers. Next slide. Help us set aside $260,000 for those nurses that we've added. Next slide. $588,000 for the counselors that we've added. Next slide. $300,000 for the interventionists that we've added. Next slide. $3 million so that we can be an attractive offer to new teachers coming out of school, asking them to come to Vigo County to teach. Next slide. And $1 million for transportation, helping us keep our field trips, helping us keep our extracurricular and co-curricular activities alive. Next slide. In terms of the $4 million cuts, these are the areas that we think we will move into. We will move into, looking at our assets. How do you work with your community with public-private partnerships? Let me give you just an example. Would the school district lease space to a for-profit daycare center in our buildings? Help them reduce their cost, help provide a need for our community, cost-effective. Could it be something as Boys and Girls Club asks them to move into space? So how do you create public-private partnerships? Management of our staffing levels. Obviously, our ability to control the number of staff has had a great impact on our cash balance. Being able to manage that is going to be part of our solution. Process-based strategies. How we buy and purchase paper could save a school district $250,000. And then use of technology. If you look at the very bottom bullet, we're very strong at data analytics on our academic side. 90% of our third graders will pass, did pass IREDS this year. We get there through data-driven analysis. We have to take that same data approach that we use on the academic side and move it over into the operational side. Next slide. And again, no stream rises higher than its source. Apologize for the speed at which I moved through that, but I know, having set on that side, how your time is important. Any, I don't know if I can take questions, or are there any questions?
A few questions from council.
Rob, thanks for coming and doing this. One question that I had, this, I hope it's an easy question. You mentioned recognizing years of service a couple of times for incoming teachers who have taught elsewhere. Is that a local decision, or is it driven by union contract? Or what are you doing to address that?
No, that is strictly a local decision. It was not driven by union contract. It was just an administrative decision. And again, I think at the time that it was implemented, probably served our district very well. Times have changed to where we're now dealing with a teacher shortage. I do know that we've lost staff members this year to other surrounding corporations. They moved into our school system, taught for a year, and then if a job opened up in one of the schools that had the ability to recognize service. The issue becomes, how do you undo that? So if you start recognizing service this year, and you're the math teacher moving in, and you had 10 years of experience, and we recognize that this year, and I'm the math teacher who moved in two years ago, and I have 10 years of experience, and we teach right across the hall from one another. So we've got to think about culture and the strength of our culture, so what kind of strategies if we're going to try to work on that issue. We maybe have a little bit of direction in the school business. If, take myself, I have several sick days. The school corporation has agreed to honor so many of those sick days a year to bring so many in. So I think that may be a path forward when we look at this experience, not to be able to bring it all in at once, but how do you start looking, if we have a successful referendum, I believe is the only way we can address that, but not bringing it all in at once, but bringing it in at a few at a time. Thank you.
Thanks, Ayil.
Dr. Hayworth, are these cash balance dates, calendar year-end dates?
Those are calendar year-end dates.
19 is the projected balance, the end of 19. What's the budgeted cost of the virtual program?
$174,000.
I'm sorry?
$174,000.
Thank you.
Actually, that cost is split over two years, over two calendar years, so half of that cost in 2019 and half in 2020.
And then to put the $11 million into perspective for us, what's the total revenue amount? And then I presume the total projected expenditures are 11 million above that amount. So what is, what total revenue amount are we talking about? 100 million, more than 100 million?
In terms of total, what we need as a...
The deficit is some total revenue amount?
Yeah. I think right now, we're about 102. I think we need to be at 108, 109.
It's at 102, 102 million?
Yeah.
Okay. Ayil, thank you.
One of the things that I'm fascinated about is the virtual schools. What is driving parents to go that route? If we, you know, I was at North High School this last week, doing some schedule changes for my kids, and there were a lot of people that were withdrawing to do the virtual schools. I just didn't know what the draw to that is.
I think it just speaks to an overall change in philosophy of how you receive your education. Again, I think we are mirroring at the K-12, what you see in higher ed. You know, my first encounter with virtual education was actually sitting in a classroom and... at Springs Valley French Lick and doing distance learning here with Indiana State. That was years ago. Now, again, you see not just commercials for higher ed, you're now seeing commercials for K-12 virtual schools. When you speak to parents of virtual school students, you'll hear parents speak to anxiety. In fact, the virtual school that we launched in Elkhart, we actually had a social worker for that virtual school. When you think of just the mobility of parents and things that they do with their children, whereas when we were growing up, mom and dad never took a vacation in the middle of March because school was in session. I think it, if you also think about the rise of the homeschool network, trying to personalize education for your child, I think that's part of that. And sometimes it could be as simple as not wanting to get up and be at school at 8:30 because virtual school is always open.
That sounds like my son. With regards to state funding, I know the state increased public education by two, two and a half percent. I know virtual schools got a 10% increase in their funding, and I know charter was around 9%. How does that funding affect the school corporation? Do they get part of that 10% funding? How does that work?
Now, we will see a virtual student funded just like a student that is in a seat. So that's $6,326 for that virtual school student. Now, what would not be true, if we think of Union Modoc, students that go from here to Union Modoc, it is whatever that dollar amount that has been established for Union Modoc is what that student would receive, a school would receive for that student.
Okay. And I've just got a couple more. With regards to the school officers, I know, I'm proud of the fact that after Sandy Hook, that we, you know, led the state with regards to officers. I know the state had talked about giving grants to help that out. Is that going to offset anything that we're doing now or?
Not really. If the, this is going to sound critical, and I don't mean to, any financial assistance we can get from the state is greatly, greatly appreciated. What that looks like is almost a one-size-fits-all. You know, so our $100,000 for a school district, our size, what we invest that in equipment more so than we do people. But we will pursue that grant. We submitted the grant this past week. We will go after those dollars. But we look to use those dollars maybe to help buy radios for the officers that we do have and help update their equipment.
Okay. And with, back to the virtual schools, are we just going to market that for Vigo County? Are we going to go after some of those other districts that took some of our kids? Are we going to go statewide with that? How are we going to proceed with that?
I would say our first goal is to capture all virtual students that left us.
Okay.
And figure out how we grow that program. It would be nice if all 367 of them were using our virtual school.
And I think it's great that you've been available to, I'm sure you've gone to every Rotary Club meeting, every Optimist meeting and so forth. One of the questions that I always get asked with regards to cuts, do you have, is that going to affect, you know, the arts? Is that going to affect sports? Where do you feel that those cuts are going to come from that people can realize what's coming their way?
Well, you try to, in the school business, you try to, any cut that you make, how far away removed can that be from the student? And so you start to examine, all right, are there things that we're funding outside the K-12 mission that you're just doing because you've maybe done that for several years? Then you start looking at efficiencies inside your systems. What are you doing three of that you don't necessarily need to be doing three of? You can do two of those. I do not see our cuts landing in the arts. I do not see our cuts landing in athletics. I think at $4 million, again, I think we will notice those, not feel that. But for me to announce those tonight, that's always not going to happen.
Fair enough. Ayew, thank you.
No, thank you.
Simpson-Haywood, I just have one question, and it's just clarification, because I think people are often confused about this, and a lot of people will watch this presentation on television. It's amazing how many people watch the city council meetings on television or on YouTube. And just to clarify that the property, the property tax referendum essentially is really your only tool to raise funds for this purpose. Is that correct?
Yeah. The legislature has said, if you're going to run a referendum, to, let me answer that a different way. The only way to increase revenue through taxes is through property taxes. There are no other taxing solutions.
I think it's just important that people understand that, that this wasn't a choice you made from a whole range of possibilities. This is the one that was available to you.
Yes.
Any other questions from council for Simpson-Haywood? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I apologize. I have to run off. We are doing a celebration from a summer camp that we had and going to go attend that. So thank you very much.
Can we go with you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there reports from the Board of Public or from safety?
I did not receive any.
I need reports from standing committees.
I do not believe there are.
From non-standing committees.
There are none.
Next item of business.
Resolution 11, 2019, designating an area within Terre Haute, Indiana, commonly identified as 20228 South Sixth Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of an eight-year real property tax abatement, 200 South Sixth LLC. This is previously tabled, and it's for adoption.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Madam President, fellas of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, 200 South Sixth Street. We are requesting this to be tabled one more time. We do so for the reason, this, there's been some questions regarding vendors and who this contractor or who this, who the petition is going to be used to do the work. It is currently out to bid as we speak, and I think that by the September meeting, we will know who the successful bidders would be in the event that this is a go project. And I think that's information that you have inquired about and that we haven't truly been able to answer. And I think with 30 more days, we would be able to do so. So that would be our request tonight.
Procedural question. This is for adoption, correct? So the next time's confirmation. So if you voted to adopt it tonight, they can still bring that forward the next meeting without tabling it, is that correct? I mean, what, what does tabling benefit?
Well, you still have to vote to see if...
Let's assume that it passes as being, as adopted, like it did the last time. Okay? Then you go to the confirmation proceeding. If we table this, then you're stretching it out again, is that correct? Then you're going to do an adoption and then a confirmation again.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify.
I would assume a concern that you might have would be that someone would vote differently once they had that information.
Absolutely.
Or at least possibility of that.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to table.
September 5th or September 12th?
The 13th is my birthday, so the 12th would be appropriate. But you guys are proud of doing all that.
September 12th, fine.
Okay, with a second, Mr.? It's been moved by Councilperson Harrison and seconded by Councilperson Nation that this matter be tabled until September 12th.
I have a question. If we do that, then that puts it into October for a vote, is that correct? Okay. I understand that, that I would rather, my, my opinion, if it's going to be tabled, which I'll vote to table, I would rather table it to the 5th so that we can finish this up in September. I think drawing this out for another two months is ridiculous.
No matter what, I'm sorry, Councilman Azar, no matter what, it will be two months, no matter what, because I have to advertise it between adoption and confirmation for at least 10 business days.
From the time of adoption?
Yes. And then, you know, you've got to give three or four days' lead time to get everything ready.
Okay, all right. I'm okay with that, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? It's still tabled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item of business. Nope, nope, sorry.
Appropriation 13, 2019, $560,000 from wastewater number 06200061 to purchase of equipment number WWTP, 444010 for $400,000 to purchase of computer equipment, WWTP, number 444030 for $5,000, purchase of vehicles, WWTP, number 444080 for $75,000, to lease equipment, WWTP, number 444120 for $61,000, purchase of safety equipment, WWTP, number 444180 for $8,000, to replace lab equipment, WWTP, number 445040 for $10,000, and depre-treatment equipment, WWTP, number 445050 for $1,000.
Petitioner.
Madam President, Members of the Council, Mayor Deuce Bennett. Good evening, everyone. Appropriation 13 is basically asking you to perform an administrative function to restore the line items in the budget. I provided you with a handout, and I'll work through this quickly, but I've got the summary sheet on top. I'm going to work through that, but there's a couple of things I want to refer you to. Basically, if you look at the document directly behind my summary sheet, it says Budget Form 1, Budget Estimate, and it's got adopted and proposed 2018, 2019 at the top. It should be the first thing after your two-page executive summary. This is the budget that was prepared by the wastewater treatment plant and what we had planned on doing for 2019. If you flip to the last page of that, page four, you'll see highlighted in gray, the seven, excuse me, nine categories that we had intended to budget for 2019 in the wastewater treatment plant under Series 4, which are capital outlays. And so our original budget that we proposed was $778,000. So as we go through our internal approval process, that's what we did. The controller and myself approved that $778,000. Then the next step in the process is to enter it into Gateway, and then we print out the Gateway forms and give it to the council for deliberation. One of three things happened. Either someone didn't enter those line items in, or they entered the line items in and they didn't save, or there was some glitch with Gateway. But the bottom line is, we didn't catch it in our review process when we gave it to you guys. And so, actually, we didn't catch it until the first of the year when we were entering our data. We can't do anything until we get our 1782 notes. So there is no budget until February or March when we know what our actual appropriations are. And when we get the 1782 notes, then we get everything in the computer system to manage the finances for that year, because we can't do that until we have a budget. That's one of the unfortunate things about the way the state does the budgeting process, because once again, as I've told you many times, you're two or three months into the year, you're spending money, but you don't really have a budget. Because you guys approved it, that doesn't mean anything until the DLGF actually approves the budget. So we didn't really catch it until that time. We thought it was in there. And that's our fault. And so we're going to do some different things this year to ensure the people doing the entry are not doing the review. That's kind of the bottom line on that. So there are nine line items, improvements of buildings, improvements non-building, vehicle equipment lease, purchase of equipment, purchase of computer equipment, purchase of vehicles, purchase of safety equipment, replacement of lab equipment, and pretreatment. Those are all categories that we use every year, and we fund dollars in those categories. It's just in our budget, in our current budget, those are zeros right now. There's nothing appropriated in there. So that second budget form is just, all that is showing you that it's not in there. So that's more just for your reference. But I'll take you to the third sheet, it kind of looks like this. And these are details of what we spent so far this year, just to give you an idea of the kind of things that are expenditures out of here. These are things to operate the wastewater treatment facility and our collections infrastructure. And so this is more just for your, you know, informational purposes. But these are the kind of companies and the kinds of products and items we buy. And so far this year, we've spent roughly $285,000 or so, give or take a few dollars, out of these categories of the budget. And so what we're asking you to do now is appropriate the funds into those line items so we track this properly and actually expend them against the right categories. So there's a couple of things I would say. One is, instead of asking for $778,000, since we're halfway through the year, over halfway through the year, we kind of know what we're going to spend and what we're not, so we reduce the appropriation to $560,000. It'll likely go up again next year to be more closer to the $778 or so, but we don't need that for the rest of this year. We can survive without that. We delayed some things till next year on purpose, a piece of equipment we're going to buy, et cetera. Our current cash balance in the wastewater fund is about $7.8 million. That's with everything being paid, all of our loan payments and everything out of the way. And from a bond coverage perspective, you know, we have to maintain 125% coverage on our bonds. We're at 132% right now. So even with this, the expenditures here, that'll still put us at 132% versus 125% our minimum requirement in order to have the SRF be happy with our bond capacity. So this is a pretty simple request. It's just an administrative function, as I said. We're just asking you to appropriate money that's already in there. We would have brought this budget to you, and my guess is, there's probably a 99% chance you would have approved it, as you do every year from the wastewater side, because the revenues far exceed expenses here. These are the things we have to have to operate the plant. So these are required expenditures, and we've got to do it. It's just our internal control of reviewing this. We have, there are 4,200 entries in Gateway, are line items, and there's five for each one. So we did 20,000 entries in the Gateway. Three or four different people, you know, worked on that, and we missed 45 is really what happened out of the 20,000 entries. And we should have caught it in the review process. We did not. And so we're here tonight to ask you to fund these line items so the budget is properly accounted for and gets us back on track, I guess I would say. So after public comment, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any person from the public who would like to comment on Appropriation 13, 2019? Again, please state your name and address.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. For the public at large, I'd like more, I'd like more of a definition. You're giving me headlines like a budget, we're going to buy one loaf of bread or 100 rows of bread. You're not telling us what the bread's for or what kind of bread we're actually buying. When you're talking about the sewer project, they are cleaning the water that we drink, the water we're paying the water company to give us that is supposed to be healthy. I'd like a more definition of what we're paying it for. How clean is that water and what does it take to keep it clean? Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment on Appropriation 13? Okay, if not, we'll go to questions, comments from council.
Madam President.
Yes.
Mayor, thanks for this information. Looking at the list of things that have been purchased, the Series 4 capital outlays, am I understanding correctly that when I get down to the total on page, maybe page four, page five, that so far we've spent $275,000 and change already this year?
Yes, that is correct.
And when I look at the grid that you gave us, the budget form...
The original or the current budget?
You've got from 2018 for purchase of... We've got from 2018 for purchase of equipment, $175,000, and then $400,000 that you wanted to put in there for 2019.
Right.
This is, you probably know the answer to this question. If you, when you failed to put the $400,000 number in there, did that mean that we automatically plugged in $175,000 from 2018?
No, just zero.
So it's just zero?
Yeah, you know, this is just for the reference point, and when you put it in the Gateway, you just put the new number in. And so if you don't put anything in, then it's zero.
So, help me understand.
Because that's 18 budget, what, that was in Gateway.
Got it, I understand that part now. So we've spent $275,000 without any money, from that line item, without any money in that line item?
That is correct.
That's where we're at.
Yes. And that's happened before, and once again, it happens every year for the first two or three months, because we really have zeros in everything, because until our budget's approved, we have nothing appropriated.
Yeah, I understand that from a calendar perspective, but I'm struggling to remember an oversight like this, that we've had to come back months later and straighten out.
I remember some individual line items, yes, I don't remember a whole section. We've had individual line items, and you guys have funded those. Probably two or three times, I must think, in the last 12 years, something like that.
For individual line items?
Somehow, they didn't just put a number in, they put in all the rest of the data, but put a zero in, or didn't put any numbers in, and it was just left at zero. But that's a little easier to fix, because sometimes, we can just appropriate money within that series without coming to the council.
Right.
But these are big numbers, and we have nothing else in the series to move, so we have to come to the council for that.
This is the only one that we've found from this year?
Yep, that's it. Yep, and it's a whole section. And once again, I don't know if it was entry error or technical error, we should have caught it, and then gone back, you know, to the DLGF and fixed it, and we didn't catch it.
You mentioned that you knew about this earlier in the year. Is there a reason why it hasn't come before?
I mentioned to the council that we were going to have to come back to you and fix this, it's in a document that I've given you guys earlier. Said we'd have to fix it. I didn't have the numbers, because I didn't know what we needed to put in there. This is something that has to be fixed by 1231. It does not have to be fixed prior to that. When we end the year, there has to be an appropriation in that line item to spend that money, but you can't do that. But all year, you can spend it, you can overspend the line item all year, but at the end of the year, if you don't correct that, either through an appropriation or transfer, then you get dinged for that. That is what you can't do at the end of the year.
And at the end of the year, we move money around?
Yep.
Among all the accounts, well, not all, but many of the accounts.
Like from a series to a series, because we can only do it within series internally, we can move it within series with documentation, we send out the DLGF. You guys have to move it from Series 1 to 2, 2 to 3, or 3 to 4, whatever, that's what we do at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you for those explanations, I yield.
Madam President?
Yes?
Just to answer Mr. Hyde's question, this is essentially operational equipment expenses, just to operate the plant, and some safety expenses too.
No problem.
I don't know if that's the headline you're looking for, but that looks like that's what we're doing here. I don't see any other questions or public comments, so I'd make a motion to approve Appropriation 13, 2019, as presented.
I'm sorry, it's first reading.
First reading.
It's first reading.
Oh, sorry. So I'd make a motion that we vote on Appropriation 13 on its first reading.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison and seconded by Councilperson Devon, that we vote on first reading on Appropriation 13, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Madam President, I move that we approve Appropriation 13, 2019, as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison, seconded by Councilperson Oller, that we approve Appropriation 13, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item of business.
Appropriation 14, 2019, $8,214 from Edit number 04040096 to demolish unsafe buildings number 432018.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Steve Witt, Department of Redevelopment. This is very typical, as I think you're all aware, oftentimes when a department demolishes an unsafe structure, lien is placed against the property. Occasionally, those liens are satisfied, when it's paid, it goes to the general fund of the city, so we ask that the money be put back into Edit, so we can use it to demolish more unsafe buildings. Supposedly that.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on Appropriation 14, 2019? Same then, council?
Madam President?
Yes?
Steve, thanks for coming tonight. Usually, we get Dean or Phil, but it's good to see you here. If there are no further questions, we need to vote to vote on this, right? So I move that we take action tonight on Appropriation 14, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Elliott, that we take action on Appropriation 14, 2019 this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We may take action.
Thank you.
Madam President? Well, I guess you're coming. Madam President?
Yes.
I move for approval of Appropriation 14, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Morris, that we approve Appropriation 14, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so approved.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business.
Resolution 12, 2019, authorizing a temporary revolving loan from the Terre Haute Redevelopment Commission.
Petitioner.
Madam President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett, I'm back to do the next installment of the redevelopment loan. As you remember earlier this year, the end of last year, we provided you with an update on our financial plan, as we moved forward with our borrowing, internal borrowing, in order to support general operations of the city. As you know, we do a tax anticipation warrant, and we do a redevelopment loan. A few years ago, we, the maximum amount that we had borrowed from redevelopment was $5 million, we reduced that to $2 million, and then we paid that $2 million back in June of this year, so right now, we have zero balance with the Department of Redevelopment. But we're asking for $1 million to carry us into the last part of the year here, so we've gone from five to one on that internal borrowing from the Department of Redevelopment. We need to continue to make sure we have cash flow in place as we wait our tax dispersments each time. We continue to build a little bit more reserves, you know, each month it passes, so we continue to take the pressure off of building our own reserves, so we won't have to do the tax anticipation warrant primarily. The goal would be to, and not to mix the two, but just so you know, these kind of things work hand in hand, our goal, right now, we have a $3.5 million tax anticipation warrant that'll be due in the end of December. We intend to pay about a half a million dollars on that early, prior to December, hopefully this month. And in the case of this redevelopment loan, we're asking for redevelopment to, loan us $1 million through December of this year. It's possible that we might want to extend that to next June, kind of like what we've been doing the last couple of years, we'll come back and provide that information in December, but if we do that, then we will definitely be able to reduce the TAW in January, which means, you know, less interest to be paid. Kind of interesting, and the interest rates have gone down, they've been going up for the last multiple years, and so we paid a little bit more each year on that TAW, and so hopefully, a lesser amount and lower interest rates next year will lead to a very small amount of money. But it's important to be able to have this cash available, just to make sure that we continue to pay all our bills on time, like we have been, make sure that we can do projects on time, and make those large payments that we have to make. And so that's the whole purpose of this loan. I've talked to Steve Witt, and they're fine with this, I mean, they're getting ready to write some, you know, checks for the convention center project, they've got other projects, you know, in their hopper. They are funded to do everything they've got that they can possibly think of, and still have a cash balance beyond the $1 million that we're going to borrow. So what we're asking you to do, and we'll be going to the Redevelopment Commission later this month, and we expect an affirmative vote, to take this loan through December of this year at a $1 million level versus the $2 million level that we recently had. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, there's nothing new about this, there's no, shouldn't be any surprises, this is exactly what we had in the plan. I brought that to you last year a couple of times, each time we borrowed the money, and the last time we did, and so we're just following the plan, basically, and we've asked your support, and then hopefully, that occurs, and then the Redevelopment Commission will approve that, and we'll do that $1 million loan from basically the middle of August till the end of December. So I'd be happy to answer any questions after the public comment.
Is there a member of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 12, 2019? Council?
Madam President? First, I've got to say, I'm glad to see that the $1 million that you're asking for is split evenly between the two big tip districts. I appreciate that, and not just taking it all from downtown. I think I ask this question every time, and I don't know if the answers are always the same, but I'm wondering if, as we rebuild our cash balances, what our current target is, how many months of operating expenses should we have socked away above and beyond zero?
So as we speak, Baker Tilly is updating our financial plan, which we plugged in numbers into that, that we'll share with you as part of the budget cycle here, we should have that very soon. So I can't tell you, there's different levels of different funds, because some funds obviously generate more revenue than others, and so there's a total at the end, but there are different levels for the different funds.
Well, I don't really, I don't really expect you to have specific numbers per fund, what I'm really asking about is like an expression, the number of months of operating expenses.
Okay.
Does it make sense to have one month of reserves? Does it make, does it make sense to have six months' worth of operating expenses in reserve, so that we can bridge the gap between our property tax dispersments? What's the current thinking on that?
Well, the target right now would be three months, but the goal would be six months.
Okay.
That's pretty typical for municipalities.
That's what I remember from these previous conversations, in my mind.
We're not quite there yet, though.
In my mind, we're shooting for six months ultimately, but we're still years away from getting to that.
I would disagree with that, so we're making much better progress. We'll share that when I'm able to do cash flows here very soon, for the rest of the year.
And when I talk about this, about having operating balances, I guess I didn't state, but I am assuming that there will no longer be tax anticipation warrants, there will no longer be internal borrowing from redevelopment.
At some point, that is exactly true. So we'll see if our property tax dispersment, the first one wasn't bigger like we were anticipating. So let's see what the second one does. Obviously, we've got public safety, local option income tax revenue coming in now, our LRS and MVH is going to drop a little bit from what it is, so, you know, it's a, we're going to have to look at all those things and see what the bottom line entails.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions, I yield.
There's no further que, we don't have to vote to, okay. There's no further questions, I move to approve Resolution 12, as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Oller, that we approve Resolution 12, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? It passes.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Nation, that we adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you for coming.